Well, good evening, everyone. Greatly appreciate you joining us tonight. I want to just give a little bit, a few more seconds here for any people who are just joining to join and making sure that we don't miss anything and they don't miss any important information about the public information session and hearing tonight. So we're really happy to have you with us. We've got a really nice group of staff from the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy here to talk to you about this proposed project. My name is Jennifer Dixon and I will be the moderator tonight as well as your hearing officer when we get to that portion of the evening. So the first thing I want to do is really just go over a couple few kind of housekeeping things. The first one is just introducing my air quality and not just air quality staff. We do have another staff person here as well, but if my staff people can just turn your cameras on for a quick second here so we can do some introductions. I want to just make sure that we mention everybody so that our attendees know who's here and who's going to be available to answer questions after the information session tonight. So we're lucky to have Janelle Trowhill. She is our permit engineer on this project. I've got Caitlin DeVries. She is one of the inspectors in our Grand Rapids District Office. Steph Hanksbaugh, she is the air modeler for this facility and air modeling is a little bit different. We use a computer simulator to look at what air emissions might come off of this project. And I'm really sorry about that. I think that my internet connection got disrupted there for just a minute, so I apologize. Let me get the screen shared one more time here. All right, sorry about that, folks. Let's get back to where we want to be. So just introducing staff, we also have Mike Deppa. He's one of our toxicologists that we work with on projects like this. I also have Susan Kilmer, who is in our air monitoring unit. We're lucky enough to have Kent Walters here. He's a geologist out of our Grand Rapids District Office and he's been in charge of the Grand Haven site as well. And Mary Ann Dolehanti is our decision maker for this project and she is going to be listening in tonight on our chat. So let me go ahead and pass it over to Mary Ann so that she can kind of welcome folks to the meeting tonight. And my other panelists, you guys can go ahead and turn your cameras off if you'd like as well.
All right, making sure you guys can hear me. Um, I think I can hear you. Okay, all right. Thank you. Just double checking. So thanks, Jen. And I thank you all for joining us tonight. Again, as Jen mentioned, my name is Mary Ann Dolehanti and I'm the Director for the Air Quality Division of Eagle. And I really appreciate you all joining us tonight. Again, thanks for engaging with us on this request by the Grand Haven Board of Light and Power for an air permit. The board has proposed to install a combined heat and power plant on Harbor Island. So tonight is an opportunity for us and for me to hear from you regarding the draft air permit made available for public comment. Whether this is your first time engaging with Eagle and Eagle's Air Quality Division, or whether you're participating or you have participated in one of the local meetings regarding this project, know that we're here to listen tonight and to take your comments. We're here, we are aware that there's been some significant interest and discussion going on at the local level regarding the board's proposal. Many of you have been hearing things at that local level regarding this project, including whether it will proceed at all. So I wanted you to be, to know that it's important that, you know, you're aware that state law requires Eagle to act upon this application that we have before us, independent of local approvals. The Clean Air Act, as well as Michigan's air pollution laws and rules, are very prescriptive and allow us for that decision before us to either be an approval, an approval with modifications, or a denial if the project does not meet applicable state and federal regulatory requirements. So our review process is very thorough and only upon completion of that process will a decision be made. But to be clear, there's no final decision on the air permit application at this time. What's before you tonight is a draft document. A decision will not be made until we complete our evaluation and that evaluation includes this evening's hearing, the collection of public comments, and any additional follow-up needed as a result of the comments that we receive. So as the decision maker on this proposed permit, I take every comment very seriously. All comments, whether they come to us at tonight's hearing, during the comment period through the mail, through email, we have a voicemail comment box that I know many have taken advantage of. Everything is reviewed and considered prior to that decision being made. So I know many of you have questions and want to speak this evening. So know that I'll be listening and you'll see me again during the hearing portion of the night. So thank you for your attention and at this point, I'm going to pass it back over to Jen.
Thanks a lot, Mary Ann. And just to put it out there, I'm having some connection issues, so I apologize for going in and out. This usually doesn't happen. And so I just wanted to kind of let folks know that I am aware of that. And once I have passed this over to Janelle, I'm probably going to just go ahead and switch my Wi-Fi's because we have two, so I'm going to try the other one. So just letting you know, that's why I'm leaving my video off for now. But we are going to start tonight with an information session, which is going to be having Janelle talk you through our evaluation that we did on this proposed project, just to give you an idea of some of the background, how air quality works, how the process kind of runs, and to give you some background information on what the proposal is from Grand Haven Board. But then we're going to get to the question and answer sessions. We're going to have a couple ways. You can ask questions if you want to. You'd be able to put those into the question and answer box, type those in. So you can type those in at any time, but if that's helpful for you, whichever way you want to do it. And we'll also be able to unmute you hopefully so that you can ask those questions out loud if that's more comfortable for you. Once we get done with a question and answer session or at seven o'clock, whichever comes first, we will start the public hearing portion. So that we'll start with reading the official statement and then taking your comments on the record. So I'll give you some more information about how that works in a little bit. Well, also after the hearing, just talk about some other ways that you can still submit an official comment during the comment period. We'll talk a little bit about where you can find other information. Sometimes this is the first you might be hearing about a project or you want more details. And I'll talk to you about where you can find that. And then we'll talk about how you can connect with our panelists if you have other questions. So just really briefly here today, I want to just remind you that your lines will be muted and we are recording this meeting. So with you can also click the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen or if you're just calling in, which I didn't see anybody just calling in, but type two into your phone and we'll be able to see that you have raised your head and cast it over to you if you want to just. Janelle, you can go ahead whenever you want to. There you go. Sorry about that again. I'll try to fix it while you're talking, all right, Janelle?
That's all right. Thank you, Jen.
Look at there.
Like Jen mentioned, my name is Janelle Trowhill and I am the lead permit engineer who worked with the team of air quality staff here at Eagle to review the Grand Haven Board of Light and Power air permit application. Before we get into the details of the project, I would like to briefly talk about what the air quality division does and how the permitting process works. We all know that air pollution comes from many different things such as big farms, fuel burning vehicles and various industrial sources. The overall mission of the air quality division is to protect public health and the environment. We provide this protection by using our authority under state and federal laws through the regulation of industrial sources. AQD staff do many different things. For example, we monitor levels of air pollutants. We look at different toxics to make sure public health is protected. We conduct inspections of regulated facilities such as the proposed power plant we're talking about tonight. And we review applications and write permits for sources of air pollutants to ensure the operations comply with rules and regulations in place to protect public health. The air quality division has the authority to permit sources of air pollutants. However, I do want to point out a few things that the draft permit does not cover and that the AQD does not have the ability to regulate. These include zoning, where the facility chooses to want to locate, noise and traffic on public roads. You will want to talk to your local government if you have questions or concerns about these issues. Sorry. I would also like to note that any approval of this air permit in any form, either as is or with changes based on public comments received for the proposed conditions, does not mean that Grand Haven Board has all permissions it needs to begin to construct and operate at the site. Any required local zoning or permitting would still need to be applied for and received via the appropriate channels. By law, we have to look at the proposal under the state and federal air quality rules and regulations that apply. This includes specific timelines where we must make a decision on an application for an air permit. Additionally, we do not determine whether a power plant is needed when reviewing an air permit application. So I'd like to start to give you a simple overview of the steps that the company and the AQD go through to get a proposed draft permit ready for comment. First, a company like the Grand Haven Board decides that they would like to install, modify or construct a piece of equipment such as this proposed power plant. The company submits a permit application to the AQD. The application is reviewed by an engineer. The engineer then reviews the information the company submitted as it relates to the air quality state and federal regulations. If it appears to meet the required rules and regulations, the engineer creates a draft or proposed draft permit. Once a proposed draft permit is peer reviewed and approved by a supervisor, it is sent to the company for review. And in this case, the proposed permit was posted for public comment. Public comment is a very important part of the permitting process. Once the comment period ends, all comments received are evaluated and can potentially impact the permitting decision. Finally, a decision is made on the permit. This decision may be to approve the permit as written, approve with changes, or to deny the permit. The decision is based on the ability of the company's proposal to meet the air regulations. We cannot base our decision on the need or popularity of a proposal. So let's talk some about the details specific to this application. Grand Haven Board is requesting an air permit to install or PTI for a new combined heat and power plant at 1231 North Third Street in Grand Haven, also known as part of Harbor Island. This is the former site of the now demolished JB Sims generating station. So what is a combined heat and power plant or a CHP plant? A CHP plant generates electricity and captures the heat that would otherwise be wasted to provide useful thermal energy that can be used for space heating, cooling, domestic hot water and industrial processes. The parts of a plant like this include a turbine or engine, a generator and a heat recovery unit. These types of power plants combust fuel in an engine or turbine, which is attached to a generator to produce electricity that is sent to the grid or to a specific facility. The hot exhaust gases from the engine are captured in the heat recovery unit and could be used for building heat or to heat water for steam production. Before we get into the details of the proposed permit and the review of the project, I want to talk about the purpose of a permit. Air permits are sets of conditions or rules that which companies are required to follow. These rules make sure that the company will meet all the requirements for the protection of public health. When we review a permit application, we look at the worst case scenarios and emissions, although the actual emissions would be less. The review is based on potential emissions. This is a level of emissions which would be released from the equipment if it were operating 24 hours a day, 365 days per year, unless they are proposing additional restrictions. Any proposed restriction would be included as a legal requirement in their permit. For example, in the proposed permit, we limit the combined hours the five engines would be allowed to run and require a control device to reduce air emissions. While reviewing a proposed project like the one Grand Haven Board is proposing, we look at a number of items. We examine the level of emissions being requested to figure out how the project should be classified based on, based upon the amount of emissions and the type of equipment a company is proposing. We determine what type of technical review is needed, including which rules and regulations apply. We assume worst case scenarios and make sure the company still meet all rules and regulations in place to protect public health. The application addresses specific state and federal regulations, whether they apply to the proposed project and how the project would comply with each applicable regulation. These rules and regulations are in place to protect public health. Computer simulations referred to as modeling were performed for nitrogen oxides, acrylene and formaldehyde. This computer simulation puts an imagery air measuring device or imaginary air measuring device in hundreds of locations around the location Grand Haven wants to build. These imaginary monitors look at whether air emissions would be below standards. A control device was proposed to limit air emissions. A review of the proposed device was completed to make sure it meets state and federal requirements. We also ensure all proposed pollutants would meet their health-based screening levels. So let's talk a little bit about these screening levels and the rules associated with them. I know this slide has a lot of acronyms on it. They're for certain set of standards and then for specific pollutants. Another word I will use is ambient. Ambient essentially means outdoor. So standards dealing with ambient air are looking at the outdoor air, which is typically the air that we breathe. There is a set of six pollutants called the criteria pollutants. This set of pollutants has certain health-based levels called the National Ambient Air Quality Standards or the NACs. During the permit review, these levels were looked at to see if a computer modeling demonstration like the one we just talked about was required. Nitrogen oxides required a computer to be used to ensure health would be protected by what Grand Haven is asking for. These modeling results were compared to the health-based National Ambient Air Quality Standards for nitrogen oxides and found to be below the standard. The NACs are developed from research studies and designed to protect against health problems like lung and heart problems, learning problems and premature death. They are also designed to be protective of sensitive groups like people with asthma, children or the elderly. Based on the potential air impacts, the proposed emissions will not cause violations of the NACs. Areas that are not violating the NACs are described as being in attainment or meeting the NACs. This is shown with the green areas on the map. Areas that do not currently meet the NACs are considered to be a non-attainment. Michigan currently has non-attainment areas for two pollutants, ozone and sulfur dioxide. This is shown in light blue and dark blue on the map. The proposed facility will be located in Ottawa County that is currently in attainment, shown in orange. In addition to this, modeling of the potential emissions from the proposed facility are not predicted to cause non-attainment in this area. So in addition to the health-based national standards, Michigan has health-based screening levels for other pollutants. In this permit review, we use the computer model to compare the requested emissions to our health-based screening levels. Some of these toxic air contaminants, also called TACs, are acrylene and formaldehyde. These screening levels are designed to protect against health issues like developing cancer or breathing problems. Most of the screening levels are for individual pollutants and most of the pollutants in this review were evaluated this way. Since people are exposed to multiple pollutants at once, this is a limitation to the rules. Based on our evaluation of the potential air impacts, the proposed emissions will not violate the health-based screening levels. Let's talk about the review and evaluation of these important rules we have been talking about put in different parts of the proposed permit. So let's go into a summary of the proposed facility for Grand Haven Board. The proposed permit conditions have sections for different pieces of equipment called emission units. These emission units include five natural gas-fired engines, which are attached to generators to produce electricity to be used during peak utility times to offset the cost of electricity. The waste heat from the operation of the engines will be recovered to use as facility space heating will be utilized in the existing downtown snowmelt system. The proposed permit also contains the snowmelt boilers, which are proposed to be relocated as part of the project. The snowmelt boilers were installed in November of 2020 at a different location under an exemption and have been operating under this exemption since. The proposed draft conditions contain requirements to make sure that the emissions they would actually emit do not exceed what was reviewed. This includes the proper use, monitoring and operation of the equipment and control devices. The operating hours restrictions will limit the CHP plant emissions. The CHP plant will also operate on natural gas instead of coal as the previous JB Sims generating station. The annual emissions will be used for compliance and hourly emission limits will be used to demonstrate compliance with stack testing. The proposed permit requires stack testing for the engines for nitrogen oxides or NOx, carbon monoxide, CO, and volatile organic compounds VOCs and formaldehyde. Testing is required within one year of startup of the engines and subsequent testing for NOx, CO and VOCs is required for the engines every 8,760 hours of operation or every three years, whichever comes first. I can answer any other questions you have about the proposed project and permit conditions. But first, I want to have Caitlin, the area inspector, talk a little bit about the inspection process for a facility like what the Grand Haven Board is proposing.
Thanks, Janelle. Hello, everybody. My name is Caitlin DeVries and I am the out of our Grand Rapids District Office and I am the air inspector for all of the power plants in our district. And I would be the inspector for this proposed facility if it moves forward. So there are a number of ways for inspectors to check compliance, one of which being inspections, which are usually unannounced. When an inspector conducts an inspection, we are physically onsite looking at the facility at everything related to the permit, state and federal regulations. This means actually physically looking at the equipment, the operation of the equipment, including any stacks or control devices, and conducting a thorough review of all of the records that are required for the permit. New sources are inspected within the first year of startup and then inspected on a regular basis thereafter. An inspector may also conduct additional inspections in response to any complaints. A complaint investigation is similar to an inspection and typically focuses on the area of the plant that the complaint may be associated with, such as an odor. After we conduct an inspection, we write a report and once the report is signed off, finalized and signed off by our supervisors, the report is posted to Eagle's website and is available to the public. So with that, I'm going to pass it back to Jen to bring us into the question and answer portion of the evening.
Thanks, Caitlin, and thanks, Janelle. I appreciate it. Hopefully my internet will cooperate and if it doesn't, I'll probably have to end up turning my camera off, which I know will make everybody sad, but it'll be fine. We'll figure it out here. And if anything horrible happens, I do have my co-host Matt Tomlinson on. I neglected to introduce him earlier, but he will be able to help with question and answer if something goes crazy over here on my end. So not sure if it's weather related or what's going on, but we're going to get into our question and answer like Caitlin and Janelle said. So what I just want to do here is I'm going to go ahead and just remind you about how you can ask questions of our panelists. So panelists, if you guys want to start turning your cameras on, that would be awesome. And Janelle, I don't know if you, did you, I don't know if you're having connectivity issues either, but we didn't see your face during your presentation. So here's Janelle, if you didn't see her earlier, she, she is a real person and she's ready to answer your questions. So use that question and answer box to type in any questions. A lot of times that's easier to formulate, but if you wanted to ask your question verbally, you can do that as well by using the raise hand icon or doing pound two in your phone. A couple of just other things too, want to put folks' names up on the screen who we have on our panel tonight. So just to reiterate who we have with us today and we've got obviously Janelle, who you heard from, and Caitlin, who you heard from. And then Janelle talked a lot about the computer modeling that was done and that is our friend Stephanie Hanksbaugh. She is a great asset to our team and really is helpful when it comes to that and is really good at describing it. So even if you aren't really interested in the modeling done for this and you just want to know what modeling is, it's kind of an interesting conversation. Mike Deppa again is our toxicologist online and Susan Kilmer does our air monitoring. So again, some interesting things to kind of know, how do they fit into the permitting process or just air quality in general? If you're not familiar with our air monitoring network, which is what we call it, it's all our like stationary, stationary stations, if I can say that. So our, our sets of equipment that are set up around the state to measure for certain types of pollutants in certain areas in the outdoor air. So that's also kind of an interesting thing too, if folks had questions about that. So I'm dilly-dallying because I don't see any questions coming in and I want to make sure that that's not just me, me, my computer being slow here. And we will get to the hearing portion. I want to just reassure you guys that we will get to that hearing portion here in a little bit too. If you don't have any questions, if folks want to make comments on the record. I did get a couple notes today that there are at least two people, I think, and I think I see them online now that want to make comments on the record. So we will get to that portion again in a minute here. I'll just give you guys a couple more minutes just to make sure that nobody is typing anything in to the question box here. So I'll just give you a couple of minutes. So panelists, hang tight. Awesome, great, Peter. I see that your hand is up, so give me a second to unmute you. All right, you should be able to unmute your line and then go ahead and ask your question.
Okay. How does this permitting process play into the fact that the Grand Haven Board of Power and Light apparently has withdrawn its proposal to build this facility? Why is this even a thing?
Nope, that's a really great question and I think you got on a little bit late, Mary Ann. Bill Hanty, our division director, did talk about that a little bit, but I'm going to ask just Janelle to kind of go over, you know, how our air permitting process works and just talk a little bit about how we kind of have to move through this unless the company withdraws their permit. That hasn't happened, so we're kind of in the middle stages of that right now. So Janelle, can you add a little bit more onto that for us on how that process works?
Yeah, we have with our state and federal rules through the Clean Air Act that we have to make a decision on a permit unless a company withdraws the application. And we have a certain timeline that we have to make a decision on that permit. This public hearing satisfies one of the requirements for that timeline to be able to make a decision, but unless the company withdraws the actual application, we cannot just make a decision until we get through the whole process.
And it's interesting too, Peter, so that's, it's a really good question because I think a lot of times there is sort of a misunderstanding between about how this process works. You know, there are certain steps that a company has to go through to get permissions. They have to get permissions from a lot of different people. They have to get them from their local municipality. They have to get them from the state. Sometimes they have to get federal permission. And this step in the process isn't dependent on any of the other steps either going through or not going through. Um, and this step in the process isn't dependent on any of the other steps either going through or not going through. Which is kind of interesting. You would think that it would be, but it's not. So, um, I know this kind of feels like a little bit awkward. But it's definitely a part of the process. So we really appreciate folks taking the time to listen in tonight and to ask questions and provide comments because. Um, it is a very important part of our process. So I'm just waiting to see, did you have a follow-up? Hold on one second, Peter. Let me. Oh, nope, you're good. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, it, it, uh, you know, I understand the process, but. Somehow it just, uh, seems to me a bit duplicitous. On the part of the Grand Haven Board of Power and Light. To have not withdrawn this permitting, uh, application to you guys. Uh, you know, I. Kind of smell a rat, to be honest with you. But you know, I know you can't comment on that.
Yeah, we can't really comment on that, but I mean, it is. It's interesting and you know, it's, it's one of those things when, this isn't the first time that this has happened. We have had definitely other permits where. Um, despite not having local approvals or other approvals in place, a company has gone forward with their air permit. And air permitting process takes a really long time. So Janelle got the application. I don't even know when we got this one, Janelle, if you can comment on that, but it, it, and go ahead whenever you.
We, we got it in March.
In March. So it takes a long time for us to get through this, to get even to this point. So. There are definitely times when a company will say, you know, we know we don't have all the other permissions. But we still, we started this process. It's very long. It's very detailed. It's very technical. So how can we? Just kind of keep going. Maybe, you know, we can't speak for the company, obviously, but they might have other things that they are, you know, thinking of in case, in a case like this. We've had companies that go through this process and end up. Installing and we've had companies that go through the process and end up not installing. So, you know, it, so here's another little just. Tidbit of information about air quality permitting that we don't talk about a lot of times in our presentation, but getting an air permit from the state of Michigan is free. I know mind blown on that because in a lot of states it's not, you, you know, a company has to pay for a permit. But here in the state of Michigan to apply for an air permit like Grand Haven Board did and to. Um, get through the process, it doesn't cost them any money to the state. Now they might have to pay consultants, lawyers and things like that on their end. But they don't pay for the permit. We don't have a process in the state that requires a fee. So their risk in doing the, a company's risk in doing that is fairly low to get through the process. So I don't know if that offers some sort of. You know, kind of perspective or not, but, um, it is interesting. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, we do have a question. It's interesting one. It's kind of about. It's related to, um, maybe sort of biofuels or some kind of alternative fuel. So Janelle, I'm going to throw this one at you. But I'm not sure if you're going to have an answer for it or not. It might be something we have to get back to folks on. Caitlin, you might have something that you can add in on it as well. Um, again, if we don't have an answer to this, we can definitely. This person was anonymous, but if you, you know, you want a direct answer and we're not answering it for you, can definitely, um, put your name in later, but it says. In the future of blending hydrogen in the engines becomes a viable environmental. Excuse me, environmentally sustainable fuel, would a permit modification be necessary for this plant? So say if the plant was, let's just look into the future in our crystal ball. If the plant was built. And hydrogen became viable. Would a, a modification be required to burn this different kind of fuel and? Additionally, does Eagle see hydrogen as a viable fuel for future power generation? So that part I don't know that we can necessarily answer. But maybe you can talk about a potential modification to burn hydrogen as an alternative fuel.
Thanks Jen. If anything changes from the review that was done. And they based burning natural gas and just did it on basic for natural gas. Um, so if the fuel changes at all from that, yes, a permit modification would need to be done and we'd need to. Review what the emissions would be from the project and how it changes.
Exactly. So I'm glad you said that. Caitlin, I didn't think you would necessarily have anything to add on, but I just want to open that up for you if you wanted to.
Nope, I think Janelle answered that. Yeah.
Perfect. Okay. Well, I'm dilly-dallying some more. You guys can listen to me talk for a while and I'm, I can definitely. Blather on as you've probably already realized. Um, but I don't want to delay anything any further. Folks don't have any other questions. We're happy to go right into the hearing and there you go. See, I knew if I would dilly-dally long enough, we would get another question. So, um, all right. So let me just. All right. So, okay, this is interesting and I'm not sure how we can answer this question. So Janelle, I'm going to throw this one at you too. Um, it's interesting. It's another like a what-if kind of situation. So. Um, the question is, you know, it sounds like the Grand Haven Board is. Basically saying they're going to stay below certain emission thresholds. So. Uh, when the permit was requested, they said, we're only going to admit this amount of these different pollutants, like the criteria pollutants. That you had talked about in your presentation. So, um, nitrogen oxides, um, things like that. But this person is saying that they have heard that the new administration, and I'm not sure if that is. I'm assuming they're talking about the Environmental Protection Agency, the US Environmental Protection Agency. Is considering some new federal air permitting rules. So would rule changes impact this project? And if they do, would the new rules or the old rules apply? So maybe you can just talk about. The lifetime of a permit, you know, when you get a permit, how that permit. It kind of acts throughout the years and you know, does it expire, things like that.
All right. Yeah, when this company, if, if we were to approve the permit. They would not be subject to the, or the, the permit would be issued and would not have an expiration date. There are certain types of permits. Um, in our Title V program, but. And those have a five-year, they need to be renewed. Then they're not subject to that, so they wouldn't be in that boat to have to get their per- or get submit applications every five years. As far as if other regulations would apply to them if they changed on. Unless there was something that triggered it of. The type of equipment in a certain date, they had to do things by. Um, some kind of trigger factor. It would not change the permit. As once it's issued, because once an issued permit, unless there's some reason it needs to be changed, it stays like it is.
Yeah, or unless like the, the person had asked earlier about changing fuels. So if a company would install this equipment, it would be built at it. As is requested or with modifications, um, based on our public comment tonight. If they would be able to build it, and then this happens in any, you know, company that has an air permit with us. If they want to make a change, if they want to modify their process. Reconstruct their process, sometimes even move their process, they might have to come in for a new permit and depending on what they want to change. That could open up certain, um, rules and regulations to be added, changed or modified in their permit. If they go through, they get a permit, they install the equipment as they said they would, they don't make any changes for 20 years. They literally do exactly the same thing. It's very unlikely that other rules would apply to them. Now, that being said. There, like you mentioned, federal rules, there is sometimes federal regulations that will come in for certain types of processes. That will require companies to maybe not meet new standards or new regulations, but they might have to operate their process a little bit differently. They might have to do different maintenance things. So there's definitely a potential there. I don't think we can say in the future if that would actually happen. But it is really interesting concept. That was a great question for sure. I love, I like these what-ifs. Maybe I opened the door to that, Janelle. So maybe I should apologize again, um, for folks tonight, but. Well, I'm not seeing any other questions. So I think what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and get the comment period started. So not the comment period, the hearing. Um, so if my panelists want to go ahead and turn their cameras off, they should be. Good to go for now. I'm going to have Mary Ann turn hers on because she's going to be joining me for this. I wanted to just remind you. Sorry, my computer is going crazy tonight. Um, I wanted to just remind you how to not only ask a question, but again, how to make a comment for the record. So you hear me say this a couple of times. Um, but basically what you're going to be able to do is you can use that question and answer box on the bottom. You can type a comment in and I'll go over this a little bit again in a minute. But you can type your comment in and I will read your comment out loud. Um, you can also click that. Uh, raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen to make a comment, or you can type two into your phone if you're calling in and I do see that we have one. Caller. Um, so I did get one question. Can we submit questions during and after the hearing? So if you have other questions, you can definitely submit them if you want to, but be, once we start the hearing, we're not going to be doing Q and A. So if there's other questions that you have right now, um, this will be the time to definitely ask them. Otherwise, our panelists are available via email. And we'll, we'll kind of go over that later, email or phone. If you want to call in and ask questions after you've had time to digest this. Before you end up, uh, making a comment. A lot of times that will happen too. And this is definitely not your last opportunity to make a comment. All right. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and start the public hearing portion of the night. And this is kind of an awkward time where I do have to read a. Specific statement to you to. Um, legally open up the hearing part of the night. So I'm going to go ahead and do that. Just bear with me because it is a little bit, uh, dry. All right. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the public hearing portion of the evening. My name is Jennifer Dixon. And I am with the Environmental Support Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. And I will be your hearing officer tonight. Mary Ann Dole Huntie is our division director and she, with the air quality division, she's the decision maker for this permit application. And will be listening to the hearing tonight. The hearing is in regard to the draft air permit to install for the proposed installation of a new natural gas firepower plant for Grand Haven. Board of Light and Power here and after Grand Haven Board. And the request to locate in Ottawa County, Michigan. I'm going to go over some background information before we start hearing comments. So the air quality division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impacts on public health and the environment. The law governing those responsibilities is part fifty-five of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the proposed air permit and opportunity to provide information. The department may use in deciding whether to approve the permit to install or if there are additional issues to consider. Please note. The proposed air permit is still a draft permit. This does not mean the department has already made a decision. Instead, it reflects an initial technical review of the proposed, the proposal submitted by Grand Haven Board. We hope having the details of the draft permit available will help you in providing comments. Everything in the draft permit remains open for comment and further consideration by the department, including whether the permit will be issued at all. Please recognize the department can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria we must use in making a decision. For example, concerns about local zoning, truck traffic and noise are not within the department's authority. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the proposed project. We are happy to make note of your position, but please understand that the department is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support. Or opposition to the proposed air permit. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information the department will use to make its decision on the proposed air permit. The public comment period for the proposed permit began August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one and will end at midnight on October fourth, twenty twenty-one. Additional information and comments may be submitted through that time. After the close of the public comment period, the decision maker will review all comments received before making a final decision. The decision maker may deny the permit. Approve it as drafted or approve it with amendments. If approved, the decision must specify which provision of the draft permit, if any, have been changed in the final permit and the reasons for the change. In all three scenarios, approval, approval with changes or denial, all interested parties, including everyone who was on the original mailing list. Anyone who provided comments during the public comment period and anyone who attended the public meetings or hearings will be directly notified of the decision. This notification will include a letter from the decision maker regarding the decision and if applicable, the approved permit. The decision will also be posted on our webpage and sent out through, sent out through our Eagle electronic notification system. This is not your only opportunity to submit a comment. You may submit a comment via voicemail, email or US mail at any time before October fourth at midnight. I will provide specific information on how to do that later on this evening. If you would like to make a comment tonight, there are two ways to do so. You may do so in writing by typing the word comment into the question box and then writing your comment. I will read all comments you submit via the question box unless you state do not read. If you would like to make a verbal comment, you may raise your hand and I will unmute your line so you can speak. This will limit, we will limit your comment time to three minutes. If you're speaking, I will let you know when you have about thirty seconds left and I'll do my. Best to address commenters in the order your hands were raised, but please bear with us as the technology does have some limitations with that. Uh, please recognize that department staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed air permit and to listen to those comments. Thank you for your attention. I will now begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make a statement. All right. Okay. All right, Mark Van Putten. So I don't know if I pronounced your name correctly. So anyone who would like to make a comment, if you can please state your name. And if you have any affiliation that you would like to state before, um, going into your comment and Mark, you should be good to go as soon as you're ready. Nope, there you should. It looks like you're up. Yep, now you're unmuted. Looks good.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Uh, and you did pronounce my name correctly. Thanks so much. My name is Mark Van Putten. Uh, thank you for that very focused and helpful presentation. I am a Grand Haven resident and a BLP customer. I am an environmental lawyer by training and practiced environmental law during my twenty-one year career with the National Wildlife Federation. And I taught environmental law for fifteen years at the University of Michigan Law School. Uh, I believe that Eagles should give BLP an opportunity to resubmit the permit application. And if they do not, deny it as incomplete and inadequate. As BLP acknowledges, the proposed project has been canceled. And BLP has made commitments for alternative sources of power. In my opinion, there is no legal entitlement to a permit for a speculative project. The issuance of which may have unforeseen regulatory consequences for other projects and activities. To illustrate the point, Eagle's draft permit is based on operational constraints applied to specifically identified equipment. Equipment which is no longer planned to be used. Several aspects of Eagle's analysis were premised on these operational constraints, including first. Predicted emission rates for pollutants, including NOx, carbon monoxide, VOCs and formaldehyde. Second, whether or not the facility would be viewed as a major source for prevention of significant deterioration purposes. Three, exempting BLP from completing an ambient impact analysis, except for NOx, which it did do. And four, the applicability of forty CFR part sixty-three subpart two-two-two-two concerning toxic pollutants. All of these specific aspects of the permit application were based on the description of the specific equipment. That would be used under certain operational constraints which are no longer applicable. As I said, I believe BLP has no legal entitlement to a speculative permit and would respectfully request for the record. That the air quality division seek an opinion from the Michigan Attorney's General's office on this matter. Thank you.
Mark, thank you so much for your comment. We really appreciate it. Okay, so this is a comment that we received in writing, so I'm going to go ahead and read this for the record. The written comment will also be submitted for the record. I know this is an air permit that we are talking about here for the construction of a gas plant on Harbor Island, but is Eagle taking into consideration all of the contamination? That is already on the island from the coal plant. There are severe contaminants coming from the previous coal ash issues that should have been cleaned up long before the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty flood. That disperse these contaminants into the Grand River and our Pries Lake, Michigan. And then also just recently, high levels of PFOS have been discovered on Harbor Island. How can Eagle approve a permit for a new construction? Admiss all of this when the old plant isn't even cleaned up yet. So thank you so much for your comment. We greatly appreciate that. I had gotten a note that Mr. Reichart would like to make a comment and I do see Mr. Reichart on the line, so I didn't know if you wanted to make a comment or not. But if you do, if you could raise your hand or, um, somehow let me know that you would like to. All right, that sounds good. So let me go ahead and unmute you. And again, if you can just state your name. Uh, for the record and any affiliation you might have, and then you should be able to go ahead and make your comment, uh, whenever you're ready. Hold on one second because it looks like you're not unmuted. So I want to make sure I get you unmuted here. There you go. Yes, that worked. Thank you so much for your patience. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you for your patience is a better description here. My name is John Field Reichart. I am, I live at 427 Sand Drive in Grand Haven. I appreciate your involvement this evening, Jennifer and Mary Ann. I'm glad, Mary Ann, that you're called the decision maker, not the decider. My understanding is that we have three minutes to speak in this hearing, which is fine as I'm not a technical person and have just a few issues. Regarding this permit, I do have some comments and some questions for Eagle to consider. My first comment is that the message from general manager of the Grand Haven Board of Light and Power, David Walters, is that this hearing is merely a formality, that it is a foregone conclusion that the air permit will be issued. This has been a message he has shared a number of times to members of the Grand Haven community. This sounds like something from a story by Franz Kafka. You're being asked to issue a permit for a project which will not be built. The Grand Haven City Council on Monday, September 20th, this week, unanimously passed a resolution to supersede a previous notice of intent to issue bonds, authorization to build the Peker Gas Power Generating Station for which this permit is required. The resolution eliminated the funding for the plant. It will not be built. The Board of Light and Power, in failing to withdraw the request for the permit, has obligated state employees from Eagle to continue the process to determine the issuing of this permit. Look at the number of people that are working tonight that are costing us a substantial amount of taxpayer money. In addition to the time and effort of citizens to comment and object to this order, which is also costly for them, this adds an unnecessary expense to the taxpayers for the use of your time, including this meeting, the review of public comments and the determination of your findings. What a waste. I do have a few technical questions which should be considered prior to issuing a permit. The project summary states that the project would be located in Grand Haven in Ottawa County, which is currently meeting all national ambient air quality standards. The most recent data for Ottawa County's air monitor shows an NAAQS violation for ozone. The BLP plant would be an unnecessary new source of ozone. Your document states that Ottawa County is an attainment area for ozone. However, this is a dispute, there is a dispute on this issue with a legal request of the Environmental Protection Agency for their reconsideration of the attainment designation. Does it not make sense to delay issuing the permit for this not to be built project until that issue is resolved? If the permit is issued, will the Grand Haven BLP require, be required to provide monitoring and record keeping as well as regular reports to Eagle, including testing results indicating they're meeting the terms of the permit, even if the facility is not built? If so, that will be another unnecessary expense, in this case to both BLP ratepayers and Michigan taxpayers as a result of these tests would at least be given basic review. Many of us in Grand Haven have been truly impressed with the professionalism of Eagle team members as you have, as you have engaged with our community on the BLP project. I especially want to compliment Kent Walters, who hasn't commented all this evening, but that guy's been a trooper. I thank you all for your work and thank you, thank you for your patience with us.
Thank you so much for your comment, Mr. Reichart. We, we really appreciate you taking the time to do that. Just going to go ahead and look through here to see if there's anyone else that has their hand raised or would like to make a comment tonight. And I think you guys know me well enough by now. I'm going to dilly-dally along just for a minute to give folks an opportunity to do that if they would really like to. Okay. So just to, yep, I can do that. That's a good point, Matt. So Matt just messaged me. I know we do have one person calling in, so just as a reminder, if you are the person calling in and you would like to make a comment, if you want to just press pound two on your phone, just to make, I just want to give you a advanced opportunity to do that. And no pressure, you obviously don't have to, so. Okay. All right. And hold on one second here. I just want to. I think I have a question coming in and I want to just make sure that it's not a comment here. All right. Good, about 30 more seconds and just make sure that no one else wants to change their mind. And then I'll go ahead and close the hearing out and go over a little bit more about how you can still submit comments until October 4th at midnight. Hearings are a nice opportunity to kind of learn a little bit more about projects like this. And, but they're definitely not the only time that we'll accept comments. You know, we accept comments the whole time. All right. So this is a comment. I'm going to go ahead and read this comment out loud. So this comment says, it would be useful and beneficial to local community if Eagle could share a correlation for the community to consider about the level of regulated air pollutants potentially released from the proposed power plant to both the former power plant and also the emission levels from the freighters that pass through on a regular basis. So thank you so much for that comment. Much appreciated. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing out right now. And that involves me reading a very short statement, a lot shorter than the first one I had to read to go ahead and officially close it. So thank you for taking the time to participate in this hearing tonight. We appreciate your interest in protecting Michigan's air quality. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period will close at midnight on October 4th, 2021. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period and anyone who attended this public hearing will be directly notified of the final decision on this proposed permit. So the hearing is now closed. Thank you again. All right. So we really appreciate everybody participating tonight. I want to go over really quickly just how you can submit comments after this meeting if you want to. And hopefully some of you might take advantage of that. So we do accept comments via mail. You can go ahead and because we do have a person on the phone, if you have a pen and a piece of paper and you want to jot any of this down, I'm going to read this out loud for you in case that is helpful. So you can send any written comments to Annette Switzer. She's our permit section manager here at Eagles Air Quality Division. So the address that you would send that to is PO Box 30260 and that's Lansing, Michigan, 48909. You can also send any comments in via email. So well, you know, again, we weigh all these comments exactly the same coming to the hearing or sending it via email. It doesn't, it's not weighed any differently. Mary Ann's going to consider all the comments that we get. So if you would like to send in an email comment, that would be great. That email address is eagle-aqd-pti-publiccomments@michigan.gov. So it's eagle, E-G-L-E, dash, A-Q-D, dash, P as in Paul, T as in Tom, I as in igloo, the word public and comments. So PTI Public Comments is all one word and then it's at Michigan, all spelled out, dot gov is in government. What we've been finding with a lot of our commenters lately is the easiest way for them to leave a comment for us is to call our public comment voicemail. So you just call the voicemail, leave your name, any affiliations you have, and then just speak your comment. And that number is 517-284-0900. So we've been having a lot of people taking advantage of that, which is pretty awesome for me. I think that was a, a great opportunity for us, especially for folks that don't have internet access. So where can you find other information, speaking of the internet? So the best place to go is to michigan.gov/eagle-air-public-notice. So Eagle Air Public Notice is all one word. And this is a relatively new webpage that we have put out there. It's, nothing is necessarily different or new. We've just kind of consolidated everything into one page. So if you're interested in air quality actions that might be open for comment, not necessarily just this permit. You know, the commenters that we had this evening sound like they're interested in air quality stuff just in general. So that lists our rules, the permits that we have open for comment, toxics that we might have open for comment. So everything air quality related, open for comment, you can find at that michigan.gov/eagle-air-public-notice page. So what you're going to find about this Grand Haven proposal is the proposed project summary, which you heard one of our comments mentioned a couple of times. It's a very high level overview of what the company asked for, a little bit about our evaluation that we did and, and kind of some, you know, high level information. The technical fact sheet, if you really are interested in air quality stuff and you want to dig a little deeper, that's going to talk about the rules, the regulations, all that sort of in-depth evaluation that Janelle and the team did to develop the draft permit. You're going to also find those proposed permit terms and conditions. So these can be a little bit weird and overwhelming if you haven't looked at them before. So if you're looking at them and you just don't really understand what it's saying to you, you know, feel free to give one of us a call. We're happy to walk you through that and talk to you about it. We're also going to be posting the link to this meeting. So the recording of this meeting will be posted hopefully very soon. You can always find this meeting and any of our other public meetings, including the ones that Kent has participated in in the past. Those are all published on our YouTube channel, so at Michigan Eagle on YouTube. So we're also on Facebook now. That just started this week. So if you want to follow Eagle actions on Facebook or on Twitter, that's all at, at Michigan Eagle. So just putting that out there as well in case folks want to follow along with some of the other stuff that's going on in the state from an environmental standpoint. So right now what I have on the screen is all your panelists besides Mr. Walters, all your air quality panelists, I should say, and how you can get ahold of them. And since we do have that one person on the phone, I am going to just read Janelle's phone number in case you need to get ahold of someone. If she can't answer your question, she'll be happy to, to get you to whoever can. So if you want to jot down her number, it's area code 517-582-5312. So I really hope that you all were able to get something out of this evening tonight, even if you didn't make a comment. I know I've already said this, but definitely open for comments until October 4th at midnight. So hopefully you'll take us up on that opportunity if you so desire. And we really just want to thank you for, well, for your patience with my internet tonight. I swear that hasn't happened before. So a little disconcerting for me if I'm being honest. But I appreciate everybody hanging in there and sticking with us through all of this and also for the great comments that you all shared tonight. So thank you again so much for being with us this evening. I'm going to go ahead and end the meeting and I hope you'll reach out and ask us any questions, make comments, and we hope to hear from you soon.